Let's go to this meeting order. This is Monday, July the fourteenth at three thirty. And I'm gonna do a roll call first. Mr. Burris.
President.
Mr. Tindall.
Here.
Mr. Lucas. Mr. Cox.
Here.
Cheers here. Okay, before we start the meeting, I'm gonna ask, I've asked John if he would to lead us in prayer.
All right, let's pray. Dear God, we thank you for this day. We thank you that you would give us the ability to lead and guide and direct this county under your authority. So, Lord, we ask for your blessings today as we make these decisions and discuss these matters. And we're asking you to bless our time in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. What we're gonna do, the first thing we're gonna do is Employee of the Month. Madeline Saunders for Planning and Code. Melinda's gonna come up and do her thing for us?
Teresa's not here, so I'm gonna fill in for her.
Okay.
The Ware County Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Madeline Saunders of Planning and Code as Employee of the Month for July twenty twenty five. Madeline has been employed with the department since May twenty twenty four. She started out as an intern that has been such an instrumental part in digitizing the massive number of files in the department and being an overall asset that she has been kept on staff. Her nomination for Employee of the Month was made by Dustin Minju, interim planning director, who states, "Since the day Madeline started, she has brought a great attitude and been a dependable employee. She has done a tremendous job of scanning, digitizing our backlog and countless stacks of boxes of old paper documents and building plans. I submitted this nomination to show our appreciation and commend her for her efforts." And if you will remember, in the end of twenty-three, verse twenty-four, I applied for and got a grant for the Georgia County Internship Program. And Madeline is the person that we hired through that grant. And she did such an outstanding job that James wanted to keep her because he was the planning director at that time. And she is very good, and we have some more plans for her up on our side of the building as well. So, at this time, we'd like to appreciate Madeline for all of her work.
Same as before.
Great pleasure. Okay. Now, we got the proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. Melinda, would you come up and do that for us too?
I'm gonna read the proclamation here first, I'll let Lance explain kind of who's involved and what.
Goodness, Mr. Chairman of the Commission.
Good day.
Today, we are asking for a proclamation that recognizes Parks and Recreation in Ware County and inside the city of Waycross. This proclamation is supported by the U.S. House of Representatives on the importance of recreation on a local level. We have Ware County Rec Department, the local YMCA, Lawrence Walker Park, and of course, our Hope for the Nox Swamp. It highlights the importance of Parks and Recreation. As you all can recall, during the time of COVID when everything was shut down, one of the first things that opened up was Parks and Recreation. Allowing people to have access to parks. And this proclamation just highlights the importance of what Parks and Recreation does in our community. Support tourism, healthy living, active play, sports, and Parks and Recreation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we use the template from the U.S. House of Representatives. This is the Ware County designation of July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Ware County, Georgia. And whereas our Parks and Recreation are vitally important to improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks and establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities by contributing to its economic and environmental well-being. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs promote time spent in nature and builds healthy, active communities that in the prevention of chronic disease provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mentally or physically disabled and also improves the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of business, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation improves, excuse me, areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to the development and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values... And I've already got this in here, sorry. Whereas our Parks and Natural Recreation Areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas Ware County recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Elmer Thrift, Chairman of the Ware County Board of Commissioners, declare that July is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in Ware County, Georgia. The third Friday of July is hereby declared as Parks and Recreation Appreciation Day, dated this fourteenth day of July twenty twenty-five. We've got, the original goes to our Parks and Recreation Department, and we have a couple more copies for the other parks that are recognized, or excuse me, that are represented here today.
Okay.
We have our Hope for the Nox Swamp that will come up. We'll take a different thing.
Here. Thank you all so much.
One more.
Okay. Let's move on. We got a...
Mr. Chairman, can I say something?
Yeah, could you?
I just wanted to come, again, commend and congratulate the Rec Department, Swamp Park, and all the other entities, you know, for the recreation. Because recreation, we don't realize how crucial and how valuable it is in our community to, to, we don't have it. And also, I'd just like to commend the city of Waycross for what they're doing in a couple of the city parks that make some extensive renovations to it. And anytime you can have somewhere, it's a good health environment for especially younger people to get out there and play in, you know?
Yeah.
That's what we need more of today. And so, I just wanna commend them and under the leadership of Mr. Lance Adams from that Rec Department and his staff and everyone else to keep up the good work.
Yeah. Thank you, Lance. Thank you for the good work. All right, any more? Anybody else want to do something? Okay. Let's see, we got a guest speaker, Mr. Collins with the Ware County Tax Commission. Roger, would you come up, please?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, we're not having to wait like we did last year for getting the tax digest. Chief Praiser, Melody, I mean, giving me the tax digest by the end of this week, and I'll be working on it. And so, this is the forefront for y'all to be thinking about, and what do y'all want to do with the millage rate and set and all that stuff? To be thinking about that, and that's gonna come up real quick. It was just a thing, just to let y'all know. And I just tell you, my recommendation is always use rollback. But we'll figure out what that is when I get the digest from the board of assessors and chief Praiser and I get their numbers, I crunch them up. And we'll figure out what that rollback rate is.
Can be.
And then where y'all want to set it.
Okay. Anybody got any questions on it?
Well, I don't know if this will come under your purview or not, but I know that in the legislature they passed, matter of fact, it's law now now where that school board can roll their admitted rate back to ten, I believe it is.
Yeah, they can do that.
Okay. Have you, anyone kind of brought that subject to them about what their plans are?
I did that prior to the signing of it.
Okay.
And they're well aware.
So, they were aware?
Yeah, they're well aware. And they would roll back last year, but they couldn't go below fourteen.
Right, understand. So, that's gonna...
So, that's gonna be a...
Big benefit.
Big benefit to the taxpayer this year.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, so I just...
Yeah, and I have to go to their meeting tonight at six, their work session. And they have a meeting tomorrow also for the Trees Act.
Okay.
So...
I just, I hope they would go on, you know, if they could, just gonna roll it back to that ten, if they could.
I don't think they gonna, I don't think they can roll it back to ten, but I mean, that's, that'll be, that'll be totally up to the Board of Education.
Okay. I just, you know, they won't let them want to get selected by a meeting and forget, hey, you can do it.
They can roll back to ten. That's as low as they can go.
Right.
So, their rollback rate will probably be around thirteen-something from, from last year. So, I don't know where they, what they're looking at.
Okay. Okay, just pull for thought.
Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna make a suggestion. I think it would be a good idea, and I don't know if this has ever happened. I know when I was on the city commission, it never did, but I think it would be a good idea for at least some sort of meeting with representatives from the county, the city, and the school board to come together to talk about this, you know, our millage rate whenever Roger gets his numbers back to us. And so, that way, we can kind of all be on the same page and, and figure out what's gonna be best for, for the whole community. You know, what they're thinking as far as rollback, what we're thinking as far as rollback. We've got this floss that's gonna be on the referendum. We got all kinds of stuff that's happening. And, you know, I think that the three arms of tax people in this community need to kind of get together and get on the same page about, you know, about everything. You know, and not just make random decisions on their own.
Right, right.
So, I think it would, I don't know what that meeting would look like if we would do a full board of city, county, and city, or, I mean, city, county, and school board, or if we just have two representatives from each plus the managers from, from each to get together. But I just think it would be a worthwhile event to have everybody in the same room on the same table.
I couldn't agree with them more.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. Can that be done, I guess, council?
Just give us direction if you wanna do it, everybody or just two?
I think, in my opinion, I think it would be better for everybody. You know, that way, we don't have just two people speaking for half the group. We can, we can all have an opportunity because I may not be thinking the same thing Commissioner Burris is thinking or whatever. And so, I think that we should take the time and, and get a meeting put together with all the, all three boards. That would just be my take on it.
I would think so. And that way, because we all gonna have to make the decision, so we all need to be part of discussion and formulating that decision. And I couldn't agree with them more that we need to get together and not only, and I brought this up not so much with the school board, but with the city. Well, our commission would meet from time to time so that we would know, you know? Because, you know, if we're not communicating, we're not getting anywhere. And to borrow a line from the movie Cool Hand Luke, what we feel here, have here, is failure to communicate. So, if we can communicate, we can get things done.
I thought you said talking about fifty eggs or something.
I'll use that for something, yes, right there, fifty eggs.
Well, and I know another thing, we, not just about the rollbacks on our, on our millage, but I know we, something had been brought up maybe during our budget discussions about exemptions on the, for, for senior citizens or retired people that are on the, for the school board tax, you know, property tax side of it as being some kind of exemption for ones that are over a certain age or what have you. I know that was a discussion topic. Of course, I think somebody brought it up in your life, well, that's not my decision to make. Of course, it's not. You know, but I think it would be something that would be worth having on a, on an agenda. I don't, you know, whether we all agree with it or not, of whether they should, there should be an exemption like that. I think it just would be a good topic of discussion.
So, what month are we looking at?
Well, when are you expecting to have your numbers?
I expect to have the numbers by the end of this week and everything processed by next week.
Okay. So, I mean, I'm thinking, if, depending on how fast we've got to make a decision about what we're doing, we need to have it well before that. So, I'd say probably first of August. That's my, I mean, you know, I don't wanna speak to everybody in that. I'm thinking as soon as you get your numbers to us, that we know what, what the options are and what it's gonna look like as far as if we stay the same, if we do rollback or whatever we do, we know what we're bringing in. And, you know, kind of go from there.
Yeah. You should have the school board by then, too. You should have all the school board.
I'll have all of them.
Yeah.
You'll have it all.
You should, you'll have everybody's numbers sometime.
Everyone's done by the end of next week.
So, when is the drop? They, they, I mean, when, when do you have to?
Well, the, my digest is, by law, has to be approved by September first.
September first, okay.
And I've gotta have the, the tax bills out by, no later than September fifteenth. Always try to, I always try to get them out in August to give, go ahead and get them out to citizens. That way, everybody can start getting money in sooner. So...
So, yeah, so on that, that's, sooner we do it, the better.
Yeah.
You know, so that way, if we can be first of August...
If we shoot first week in August, what, what's a good day for everybody on the commission? It kind of, what's a better day for you? First of the week, last of the week, middle of the week?
Do we, we don't have a, do we have a meeting right there at the first part?
It'll be, the eleventh is our meeting.
So, we need to get ready for that.
Yeah.
We've got four, three, the eighth is the first week of August, I think.
Right now, my schedule is wide open as far as that goes.
I wanna say September fourth, was the day after Labor Day, whenever Labor Day is. I've got a tax element there on Tuesday.
We're looking at August fourth through eighth.
All right. I'm telling for September is done.
So, the city will have a...
When do they start school back?
August the eighth, I think, for the county. But my, my kids start the fourth.
I believe they said it was before then, August eighth is the first game.
Oh, the first game, okay.
Yeah.
It's probably...
Well, I know, I know my kids start back to school on the fourth, but they go to Crossroads Christian, so I would prefer it not be Monday.
I think it's...
Monday the fourth, you know, just because it's being the first day of school and all.
Well, the city will have a meeting, the fourth and the fifth.
Yeah, they'll have their work session on the fourth.
Work session in there.
I could do, I could do. Yeah, they'll have their work session on the, on the fourth. I can do, I can do mid morning, you know, ten o'clock on, on that day. So we can meet with them before they have their work session.
You're talking about the school board?
No, that's the city board. City will have their work session on Monday at, what, five?
I think maybe, might, if we just put some days out there and some times and kind of, that's usually how we have to kind of juggle it and after a while you come to a happy medium there, you know?
But the city will have another meeting two weeks later, won't they?
Yeah, the third.
Yeah, because they have.
First and third.
First and third.
All right, I've looked it up. Where county's first day of school is August the eighth on that Friday.
But yeah, anytime, anytime that week, I'm, I'm good with it. As far as I'm, you know, as far as my, my schedule goes, just let me know when and I'm, I'm good.
Good anytime.
Pretty much anytime, except Wednesday, I got an appointment at nine, nine, ten thirty, so. After lunch on Wednesday.
All right, we'll, we'll try to get with Dr. Barber and, and Mr. Rafferty and see if we can make it happen.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, Roger, thank you.
Don't go far.
The first day of school for students in Ware County is August eighth.
Yeah. August eighth, okay. Is there any more on that? You'll have to get with the city and the.
Do we think?
Board of Education.
Get out there to have the tax commissioner and be at that meeting also?
Yeah, we're gonna have to have one more.
Would you like to be at that meeting, Roger?
Yeah, we got to have him there.
I'm sure Roger's thinking anytime you have three boards discuss some taxes, he would want to be there.
I'm gonna say this, this would be strictly the government's meeting and it's not the tax commissioner's meeting and what happens is not from the tax commissioner.
We'd just love to have you there, you know?
We might need a good referee.
Yeah, go for it.
Yeah, no, I mean, actually Roger, I, I mean, I personally would like you there, not because, because I know you don't make that, these decisions, but you're, you're a good resource for explanation of, of what these things are. And, you know, I've appreciated it over the years, being able to call on you and, and ask you questions and you've always been able to explain it to where I can understand it and so. Yes, sir. Did I do a good enough job?
We're need a tax expert.
Okay. Anything else on that? All right, let's get to the agenda items. A resolution for twenty twenty-five dash thirteen Tree Act. That's, let's see. This item is a resolution to provide temporary tax relief for eligible standing timber located in a disaster area in Ware County. Roger, can you explain that to us now? No, you got to go.
Yes, sir. The Trees Act, that was, that was set in place because of Hurricane Helena. And all the damage it done, and so offset the damage that timber owners to, during hurricane, during storm. Not every taxpayer is going to be eligible for it and it's to give refunds from the last quarter of twenty-four, September twenty-eighth, twenty-two, twenty-four up through this year on timber taxes. That does not mean that everybody can go out and cut their timber and, and be tax rated. They have to meet the requirements of, on the application and it's on ACCG website and the Georgia Forestry Commission's website. Where they have to fill out the, the forms and if they have pictures, provide them and to, to determine if they're eligible for the refund. And for the, for the county and for the school, school board because they're, they're doing theirs tomorrow. Today's their work session. Now, the state set us a grant aside, set seventeen and a half million dollars aside for local governments. It's the, the average of the last three years. So that's twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Where our average timber taxes, that's how much Ware County would be eligible for it. And it's gonna be a one-time grant that will be given sometime early next quarter, meaning the first quarter of next year. And, and it's going to be delayed where after February fifteenth, because that's, that's the deadline for the timber for the last quarter to be turned into, to our, to the tax commissioner, to me or to anybody else. And the refunds. The school board's appointing me, y'all are gonna appoint me. That way the taxpayers just have to do one application instead of have two and keep track of two different ones. And that's basically it. And if there's, if there's a application that I think that they're, they're trying to get over, that it wasn't damaged, I'll, I'll reach out to the Georgia Forestry Commission and they're required to go audit that, that timber. And they got to do theirs and get the answer back to me if it, if it meets criteria or not. Yours not.
I was ready to ask you about the percentage.
I got a question.
Is that, I, I got a lot of timber down and that stuff, but is, is there? I said, no, I ain't putting nobody in there to cut it because they'll tear up more than they, than what I've already got tore up. So I was gonna ask that and I had somebody else ask that. Is there a percentage basis where you just leave it alone? And like, say you lost ten percent. You wouldn't want to go cut it. You don't, because if you do, then you, you're gonna skin up other trees and all that. So you just leave it alone.
Okay.
And plantations.
Okay.
I've got something like that. And I, I know some other people got something like that.
That doesn't apply to this. This is, this is strictly for timber taxes, timber that's, it's cut, if it was damaged and harvesters went through and they, they recovered that and gave, you know, getting some money for it. It's for that. The part that you're talking about, the, the damaged timber and you're not messing with it, they got state, there's, there's state programs for that. So they, they got, they already got that with the, the Department of Agriculture?
Probably a different. Comes under something. I, I, I don't know. I, I think we're gonna have to go to forestry with it and see what they say about it.
I got a question.
No, I, I believe you, you know, it's through the Department of Agriculture.
Agriculture, yeah.
But if, if you didn't have anybody come in and clean it up and you get paid for it, it's not gonna affect you.
Okay.
I got a question.
Anybody? Yeah, go ahead.
So you saying if, if it was down and they come in there and harvested it, they're not gonna get anything?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, I misunderstood.
If they harvest it, you do.
If it was down and the harvesters come in and they cleaned it up for you and you got some money for it, you got a timber bill. And the ones who have paid their timber, if they submit an application, it will be refunded. If, if you have not paid, if you got a timber bill and you haven't paid it and you submit an application and, and you meet the criteria, that, that timber bill will then be zeroed out. But you have to have, it has to be cleaned up by harvesters.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I was wondering, how do you have proof? Or, I mean, are they gonna have to have some kind of proof that the storm?
Oh, yes. It's all in, it's a, it's a D.
The forester got to go look at it and determine it.
They don't have to go look.
Yeah, they did on my chart. They, I mean, on my letter, it said that a forester had to come look at it and approve it.
What I'm saying though, if it's cut, it's gone.
So there's, the application is very detailed. It tells, tells the owner what they have to have. If they had pictures, they can submit that with the application. If, if they don't, if they have the harvester's name and, and valid number and the harvester can, can assist them with filling out there was damaged and all like that.
Okay.
But the, the application is very detailed, what they have to have.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's not, let me, let me tell you, it is not a blanket clearance that you can, you can cut trees and you're, you're automatically, you, you was exempt from the timber taxes or anything. You have to meet, you have to fill out the application, you have to meet your criteria and then you'll get the money.
You have to sign up and then you can take part of them out, you know, just the ones that blew down. And, and they can come in, take them out, you know, you, you do a percentage of it. Like, like it, that's what the application said.
Yeah, the, the application is very detailed.
Yeah, you got to have, get a lot of application on it. Okay, any more? All right.
Thank you, Roger.
We'll move that one over. Okay, a splash purchase request for Recreation Department. Lance, will you come up? You want to know? Let's see what's.
No, we done done a resolution for you now.
Yeah.
He, he's wanting to buy something.
Purchase request.
Last week through our budget process, I presented several items that I requested that we purchased through our supply. And these are some of the items that is before you today that were asked to be approved.
Is the, is he having any in the budget for this?
He does, Mr. Chairman. So there's money left in the two thousand and fourteen splash that will cover a portion of this. And then the rest will be taken out of the twenty twenty-two splash. The total amount he's requesting today is a hundred and six thousand eight, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-four cent. And this is some equipment that he really needs. The other equipment he's gonna continue to use, this is just a portion of that list that he submitted. But he's gonna get the, the goodie out, as they say, as the rest of it before he tries to buy anymore, so.
Okay, this is what you need now.
Yes, that's it.
It'd be, okay. We have any questions on it?
Well, I think during the budget process, which he came and he submitted, you know, what he needed. But in addition to it, I recall him saying something about some of the workers out there now having to use their own, like, personal vehicles to transport different stuff around. And you, you made a request for some, I guess, off cart type things out there?
Yes, sir.
And it was that true that your employees are having to transport some of the stuff themselves?
We have an employee that actually uses his truck to move inventory from one complex to the next complex.
And how many of those did you need? Was it two or three of those?
Yes, for the entire department, three.
So do we have money to get at least two of those? I mean, because right now they're having to use their own personal vehicle. I don't think that's a good thing.
There's more money in that account. We just didn't want to deplete it because air conditioners, it's the summertime. So it make, we can look at it, the commission will approve it. If it's there, we can possibly buy like one of those buggies and then that would give them another buggy for that, for that worker to use.
Didn't we get a pickup truck or, or didn't we buy a new?
Yes, that's a, a maintenance.
Maintenance truck, you can't use it.
Yeah, I think what they use it when they transport, like, I guess, like the stuff y'all use for the concession stand and all that and pallets. They got to try to put them on their own personal trucks, take them over there, you know, and.
Have y'all done got that other truck? The, the truck?
Yes, last year.
You got it last year.
Okay, so you said we maybe could get two of those little buggies, you said, Jane?
I, I know one for sure. I just don't want to go so low in that account this fast because it's the summertime and they're already having some air conditioning problems at the gym. So trying to leave some money there in that twenty twenty-two, although it's collecting every year.
Right.
And, but I just don't want to get it so low that we don't have anything in there.
What kind of buggies you talking about now?
It's like a side by side. But a, a work version, not, not like a leisure driving version, a work version, like a Toro, something like that. And I think there were, how much Lance, thirty?
Have you had a price on?
About thirty-four. Yes, we do have prices on them.
You got a price on them?
I can present that at the regular meeting if you like. I got them on my desk.
We need to add that to this approval then?
So we'll add it at the regular meeting if you like.
Okay.
It's gonna be another thirty plus thousand for one of those, I think is what it was, wasn't it?
Yes, around about thirty-four, about thirty.
So you'll go up to like a hundred and forty thousand or some change?
And you don't have to bid this out, Jane?
It's a.
State contract.
It's a source well state contract that, you know, it keeps you from having to go through that entire process.
Okay.
I think we're good there.
All right, any more discussion on it? All right. Thank you, Lance.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's move that over. Okay, a splash purchase request for Public Works. Larry, come up, tell us what you want.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I got a pretty good list because we ain't spent my money out there in years. But this is just kind of what I'm looking at and run it by you and see if it's all, put it out for bids. One thing I'd like to do is buy two open cab, sixty horsepower tractors with a six to seven foot bush hog behind them. I can keep two men busy year round mowing grass in Ware County in these streets and areas that the contract motor is not on. And that's, that's roughly, you're looking at two tractors, somewhere around eighty thousand dollars.
Larry, I may ask you one thing about those tractors.
Okay.
It's, where does the death cutoff? Where, where do you?
I think it's somewhere around ninety or a hundred horsepower.
Think it is.
Well, I don't, I don't think a sixty is gonna be big enough.
Well, see, got them hundred horsepower tractors with them twenty foot backwings. And you can't, you can't turn, you tear more male bosses down than you do anything.
Yeah.
But I don't think a, a sixty is gonna pull a six, seven foot more than that good.
It probably would do a six foot real good, but a seven foot would be, be kind of questionable. If it got real tall, it would probably ball.
No, it needs eighty horse.
Well, I'm trying to stay in a certain size where we can get in these fluxes and around without tearing everything all to pieces. I know the county, that's, the county used to use a forty horsepower tractor and mowers. And I mean, I can check on an eighty to see, just see if it's still in a compact frame.
Where we have, it is.
Where it'd be easy to handle.
Just check and see, see what you.
It's probably same tractor I almost looked at like, same size, but it just have a little more horsepower.
Because I was, I was gonna get the four wheel drive, open cab with a canopy on it and a set of dual remotes if we wanted to put a land level or something behind it and get one of these two block roads here and yonder. It would have saved us some motor raders all over the world too.
Okay.
So you're gonna check to see if you can get the eighty horsepower?
Check on the eighty. And if you want me to, I can put it out for bids. Add a eighty, just see if the eighty fits in the same size frame as the sixty.
Okay, what do you, did a eight foot tiller for?
Where we mixing, where we mixing these clay on these old sandy roads? No, I ain't no farmer. Wish I was. But, but where are we mixing these roads? I believe it work a lot better than that off there here.
No.
Because it's.
From experience, I know it won't, but it'll, it'll mix it up a lot, but you'd have to really have a mixer if you're gonna mix it.
Well, well, for what we're doing, you know, stacking this thing up and not actually destroying the road bed that we got, we're just adding on to the top of the sand with the clay. I believe it worked pretty good. And that's something that we ain't got to bid out. I probably got money in a spare parts account somewhere that I can get that out of.
What does that tiller run? Just a rough I D probably?
I, I didn't get an actual price on it, but you know, they probably run seven, eight, five dollars.
I figured five, just said, just get a price on one.
A good one.
A good one's gonna tear, tear ten thousand dollars. A good one's gonna tear, tear ten thousand dollars.
But what you're saying, the eight foot, you think is not big enough, Mr. Chairman, or?
Well, they, they big enough to do certain things, but uh, that's why they mix oil, cement and all with, is a mixer. And he's wanting to do the same thing, but he won't do it, just mix clay in with sand.
Sand on these old sandy roads.
We always point the grader, take the grader and point the blade and then hair it up. That, that thing, that tiller's expensive to keep up, it'll tear up all the, it's a, I don't like them, I got some junk there in the junkyard.
I've, I've got one, it's done real well, but you know, that's, that's our personal opinions.
Um, but you think the eight foot would work?
Yes, sir, cause it'll work on the tractors already, the tractors I had existing and then an eight foot, you can transport it without, you know, too much trouble.
If it's clean dirt, it'll be all right, don't, don't hit a stump.
I, I got a question, Mr. Chairman, it just hit me, um, did you ever check on getting a, a tool to clean the cover pipe out or?
No, I've been feeling with making one, I've got me some cables now where I can tie a tire to it, fix a rope through there, but.
I know we talked about one time when you were gonna try to build one, I didn't know if you.
And I've just been so busy and ain't had time.
Okay, I, I just got a couple that, I need to get cleaned out, but I'll get with you on that.
Okay, yeah, ain't no problem. And then uh, let's see, one, two, and then I was looking at replacing an excavator, Andy's excavator. I don't know how old it is, but it's looking at nine thousand hours and it's starting to give us a big problems with the computer side of it and the harness and all of that, and I would like to replace that.
What kind is it, a?
It's a Hyundai.
The one that you're looking at?
It's in exceptional shape, sir.
The one that you're looking at?
No, the one that we got now is a Hyundai, I was gonna give bid on a John Deere from Offsu, Caterpillar and.
Yes, I, I would suggest it's going out on bids and see, you know, see what you get.
See what you can find on it.
Who'd be the best and the most reasonable?
Yeah. And then that, that uh, also, I'd like to look at at least one big dump truck, cause I've had two tandem dump trucks, they've been in the shop for the last month. And them things, I don't, Barry can probably tell how old they are now.
Yeah, they, they old.
It's the same thing, same, same, sir.
Get a price on them, yeah.
Well, I've got a, a kind of a budget price here, it's under two hundred thousand, but you know, that's something we'll have to bid out too unless y'all want to.
Yeah, I, I would bid them out and then it might be a lot, you know, it'd be, it'd be better than that probably.
Yeah. And then uh, that leaves us with the motor graders, I mean, we can lease a couple of motor graders, cause I got some twelve thousand hundred on them. We could lease a couple of straight graders for five to six thousand dollars a month. And at the end of five years, you can turn that machine in when the warranty's out and Caterpillar guarantee you so much for the machine and you can start back with another lease, that's the way the county used to do it. Or you can purchase two new motor graders to replace those old ones for the, like, three hundred and forty thousand dollars pieces of is, you know, that's just kind of ballpark, it should be cheaper when you bid it out.
What did we do with those that we were gonna surplus? Still got them, the bids?
We have surplus.
Never did sell them?
I've got them, plowin' the road.
We surplus one, which is.
Yeah, that was a.
Never did sell it?
Yeah, we sold those six seventy.
Yeah, that, that was that old John Deere, but we had a, we had a Caterpillar for sale.
No, I kept.
I am.
Yeah, we, I kept them and they're all running.
So you, you, you wanna get rid of two of them?
I wanna get rid of two of them, but too high, you know, like I said, they're right at twelve thousand there.
Okay, what I would suggest is, is, is go out on bids on them and go out on, get a bid on purchasing them and get a bid on leasing them for five years and then we'll see which.
Best option.
Which will be the best option, I, I'm kinda leaning toward the, the uh, leasing though because of the, the maintenance on them.
Well, that's, they're getting so complicated now, that you know, if you ain't a dealer, you can't touch them.
And if it's down very long, they'll bring you another grader.
Exactly, that's, that's, cause with us owning them, it's ours to get the parts, we waited on a couple of fans on some of them here lately, on the cooling fans, six to seven weeks. And uh, wish it was leased, I could call up Cat and say, I need a grader, this is y'all's grader, we just borrowing it for probably some month. And they remember it's a grader out there.
Okay, what you want us to do is uh, give you a, okay to go ahead and get a price on all this?
Yes, sir.
And let us, let you come back to us.
Come back with bids and, and let y'all, you know.
That'd be good.
Cause I, I hate to, I hate to waste these people's time, getting us bids when, you know.
Well, it's kinda not fair to, for them to give you a price and then, you know, you can go somewhere else, hey, this is what they, you know, even though you probably wouldn't, but that's the way they think, so they gonna jack that price up.
Yeah, you see, that's, and the prices I've got here on this stuff is all budget numbers that I've gotten to give me. Cause they know when they go out for a bid, that, you know, that's gonna be cheaper.
I, I suggest we go out on bids and then get prices, then we can determine what he actually really needs right now. And you know, it might be later on, we can get some, something else, you know, but we'll see how the money goes.
And on that?
That would be on the excavator and the graders.
The graders.
But those other stuff you probably gonna.
And the tractor, now you say you're gonna check on the eighty horsepower?
Yeah, I'd check on the, on the, as long as it's kind of still a compact frame, you know, where we can get around easy, cause if we can't get around in some of these tight areas, we really don't, ain't gonna need to purchase them.
Okay.
I think that's what we, I can embarrass say, I agree with him, just put it out, you know, see what you can get, yeah.
Okay, well, I'll get started on it this week and see if I can type this up some bid specs.
Put it out.
Get it out for you.
Do you, you uh, move Augusta Avenue?
I got to check, we moved part of it, but I just seeing and all, it's getting so tight and that's why, you know, I talked with Andy, he's just starting, that's our contract mower. He's just starting back in Ware County today, they's picking up, supposed to start picking up trash and all, out on Mount Avenue and that area. And so they should stay with us till they get their first round back out of the way.
I just know that's where a smaller tractor will come in better there and Albany Avenue and places like that.
Well, we still move Albany Avenue, you can't, you can't move it with a back wing.
No, too many male bosses.
You need to throw all them back wings away.
Yeah, I preached that for years.
Give them to the airport, that's kinda like.
They good for the airport and we've had one over at the airport. Well, I'll sure get started on this, gentlemen, we appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
He brought the good word, Larry.
Thank you, Larry.
Sir.
He brought the good word.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay, let's go, let's carry that one over. The procurement policy mandatory under Georgia law.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is uh, House Bill one thirty-seven passed and was signed by the governor, which increased the road projects. Um, road maintenance projects is done by a private contractor and also uh, public works projects, which is uh, uh, which is like building, building and so forth, contractor type work. Um, it increased it, the uh, building part, the public works uh, uh, for buildings and so forth from a hundred thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand before it's required for bidding.
Yeah.
And then also um, for uh, road maintenance, it increased it from uh, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty. So what we're doing here is just uh, updating our procurement policy to meet this new law that's set forth in the House Bill one thirty-seven.
Okay, anybody got any questions on it?
No.
All right, let's carry that one over. Okay, E, I'm gonna turn this one over to co-chair. On this bid award.
Okay, that's uh, F, E. Okay, um, discuss approving the low and best bid received for paving very short streets within Ware County. The streets include our California Avenue, Alabama Avenue, Columbia Avenue, New Hampshire Avenue, Illinois Avenue, Missouri Avenue, Utah Avenue, Wyoming Avenue, Troy Circle, Taylor Street, Ben Hill Avenue, Quail Street, Dove Street, Robin Street, Green Bay Street Road, Adam Street, Eva Street, Glossom Street and Glenn Circle. A bid opening was held on July the second, twenty twenty-five at two P M. Only three bids were received from the following bidders, Thrift Brothers L C C in the amount of one million three hundred fifty-one thousand, hundred and twelve dollars fifteen cents. East Coast Asphalt L, L, LLC in the amount of a million four eighty-two, nine forty-six, fifty-two. Scrubs Company in the amount of one million six twenty-seven, five oh eight, twelve. The funding amount for the twenty twenty-five L-MIG is one million, hundred nineteen, five thirty-five, twenty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioners, this, these projects are the short streets kinda around the city that the commission approved to be a part of the twenty twenty-five L-MIG. Um, we would have a ten percent match in that L-MIG, so that would uh, um, up that and then we'd also have to um, um, fill the deficit of the, you know, the other hundred, hundred thousand dollars or whatever it would be. Uh, and those funds would come out of the uh, twenty twenty-two splotch or discretionary, whichever one the commission wanted to um, um, to do, but this is just uh, following up on the twenty twenty-five L-MIG.
Are these those, those streets that were on that list, those short ones that you and I looked at?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
These all are like one block long, some is paving, uh, some is resurfacing, so um, it's a combination of, of all.
Okay, so, Jane?
Yes, sir.
Okay, like I said, the lowest bid coming in one million three fifty-one, one twelve fifteen. Okay, and we only getting one million one nineteen, five thirty-five from the L-MIG.
Right.
Which leaves up, based on my math, it's about two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
But you have to, you have to add ten percent of that one one nine is required as a match for L-MIG too, so um, but yeah, you're right, it's that difference and then, so you'll have to meet the non-mandatory match of a hundred, hundred thousand, roughly, some change.
Okay, so what, what do we have to ask the Annie up?
So what, that, the number that you said, two, I didn't do the math on.
About two thirty-one?
Two thirty-one, yes, sir.
Okay, and so what we plan to try to get that from?
It'll either come out of the regional um, splotch, um, discretionary funds or either the twenty twenty-two splotch roads and bridges.
Okay. Okay, and as far as those streets right there, uh, if Thrift Brothers got the, the bid on, with their lowest bid on them. Okay, so when is this, do we have like a deadline on those or, or we're supposed to have them completed?
So there, I think the, the contract hasn't been written, um, the engineer is working on the contract now. Uh, but normally you get, I think it's roughly like two hundred and forty days from the start date to um, to finish. But as far as the L-MIG, the payment, you've got three years, um.
So you got three years to do project?
Right, that's, that's before your L-MIG expires, cause basically what you have to do is on L-MIG is you can only, you can't have an L-MIG open for longer than three years. So every three years, you have to close out an L-MIG. Um, but we're trying to close them out the year of, is what we're trying to do.
And reading, I was asking that question because I know we just uh, basically let a contract out with them for Pascal and these other roads. So I'm just wondering, you know, would this kinda, kind of add in any kinda way?
They'll submit bonds to uh, guarantee that they'll do the work. Is uh, they'll submit, I think it's performance bonds and they're guaranteed to do the work and um, so um, and, and how, how road paving would work is they may be working on Pascal and they may have a crew grubbing, clearing on Pascal. And they may have a crew doing something else on these other roads, so they'll, they'll use their crews and, and mix them and, and guide them through, so.
Okay, I just didn't wanna, you know, have a wet stop pile up where, you know, it drags it out, but I'd like say they gonna have the performance bond and all that stuff done, so.
Yes, sir, and then uh, and then I think usually the contract will put a penalty in there if you don't meet the uh, deadline without special circumstances, then you're penalized so much per day, that's usually how that goes.
Okay.
All right, so I, we'll move it over to the meeting then.
Okay, and just for record, the uh, engineer attached to your, your um, report are the bid tabs and also the um, and I apologize, they cut off, I didn't realize that, they cut off when they printed, they didn't flip the landscape. But um, the, the totals are in here on the engineer's page and he's recommending a letter from the engineer to uh, recommends the warden to Thrift Brothers LLC.
Okay.
Okay, is that all? All right, let's go on the F, resolution for twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, relocate Roscoe Mixon Road. Okay. Larry, you know about that thing, is, is it ready to go now?
So what we're lacking is, is uh, is the commission approving this resolution. The uh, the church and uh, Mr. Ralph has submitted the warranty deeds, they've been recorded, the plats has been recorded. So all we have to do is um, is approve this resolution, which uh, basically uh, also I think accepts those warranty deeds. And um, and then once we get that, we'll, we'll get with Public Works and schedule a timeline to, to go out there and move that or scrape that new road.
Okay, if we approve it, then Larry could go ahead and build it, I mean.
If y'all approved it, you know, might wanna get a survey out here first and be sure we, they give us the right of way, stakeout, so we'll stay in the right of way.
I think that's already been surveyed.
It should be state, they may have knocked it up, but it's, we can get a.
I think they were already surveyed, yeah, I believe, you remember the day I went with you that day?
Yeah.
Yeah, the state, I think it's already been surveyed.
It is, we couldn't find all of them, remember? And.
May have called it.
Mowed over and it's growed up out there, probably taking half an hour, hour to iron.
It may have get him to come back and reset the pin.
And the uh, the, the existing right away on Roscoe Road's thirty feet and then they're giving us uh, for the new one, forty-five.
Yeah.
For the new one, so.
Okay.
And so, and I know this, this has been kinda ongoing.
Right.
And I went out there and physically looked at this uh, situation out there myself, okay, so the pay road that comes down where you turn off right to going to the church, what's that road, Roscoe?
Uh, no, that's.
Pay road's North Clough Bay.
Clough, Clough Bay.
So when you turn right off Clough, you go down and you got the church on the left there.
Right, see, it's off the road.
Okay, and so when they originally came up here, they were saying something about they were gonna add on to that churchyard, something like that, and I thought it was more of a safety issue where they was talking about, about the highway.
I think it's they wanna add on and go across the uh, maybe next to the road, the existing dirt road that's there, Roscoe Mixon.
Okay.
But I wasn't, I wasn't in those conversations, I'm just going with what I read.
The road goes right up next to the church, so they wanted to move it over.
Okay, so the road that's over there, the other road that comes out there on that uh, so the other road that comes out there, that's already, which I drove on that road too.
Right.
That would be the new road that's going back out to the highway.
Yeah, over on the left.
So the road in front of the church will be abandoned?
Abandoned, give back to the county.
All right, and it'll be closed off on that part down there where it kinda makes that uh, Y?
Right. Yeah, 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 it'll be closed off there, now it'll go back to the landowner, cause the landowner's gonna give forty-five foot hill and receive that, part of that road back.
I, I got one question. When we come in and build that new road, you know, you got them two big pipes and that would dam across that creek right there they drive on. Is that gonna be deed to the county for us to take up and maintenance and keep up with, or is our road gonna?
We already maintained that, I believe, we replaced it last time it was placed.
Yeah, I don't know how he's gonna do that, if, if that road will be abandoned.
County's always kept that pipe up there, I, I do know that.
That's still big county.
So that's the county, because I noticed when I went out there, when you go down that road, right where it makes that Y, if you pass, go uh, pass it, it's a mobile home right there and they also look like getting ready to build a house or something right there next to it, so when those people come out, they will come out, instead of going straight, they will go to the left.
That's the reason, that's what it's for, so they won't have to go by the church all the time.
Where the church can build on if they want to, I think, and, you know, in front of the church here, they, they won't go right by the church, they'll go out.
Yeah, get it back left, so they're gonna close that road to it.
Okay, so I guess, and like I said, I'm, I'm trying to make sure I'm clear on this, okay, so if we go there, we, they're gonna abandon the road, they're giving us deed to the right of way and all this stuff, okay? On the new road, okay, so, and we gonna go there and build this road, right?
Right.
Okay, so now will we be setting the precedent for going building the road? That's all I'm just trying to say is, I know we're doing it, and I think it's great, you know, try to do all we can for churches and whatever. And I know in the past, they paved up to them if we paving or something like that. But I'm just saying, when we go there and build this road, then if someone else comes along and say, well, hey, you know, we want to deed this and, will we still, are we setting the precedent is what I'm trying to say.
Well, if you're doing it for the church, we did some things for the churches, a lot of times.
So, that's.
I know what you're saying, Mr. Leonard, I.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm just.
My, my opinion on that is we're doing it for the safety and welfare, um, also for us to maintain that, that, that road. Um, so, you know, it's not, and, and I haven't been out there in a long time, but I've measured on the aerials, and I measured from the edge of the dirt road, about twenty feet to the church building. And, you know, if you've got, uh, va- vacation Bible school, kids running around, and you've got people going up and down that road, even though it's only one house right there, you know, the long time, then you could have, uh, uh, an accident there, which I guess you can have an accident about anywhere. But, um, I look at this more like, you know, not an individual, but we've, in the past, we've leaned to helping churches.
Yeah, I, I'm all for that.
And, um, and so, and I look at this more like a safety issue, this is not a, a convenience issue. Um, a lot of times when people move roads, it's convenience for them, it's not a safety issue, it's convenience. I just don't want it splitting my property. Um, this is more, in my opinion, is more of a safety issue with it being so close to that church.
And, and that's, that's what I was gonna question, and you kind of explained a little bit about, you know, however we equating a safety issue. But like you're saying, if they're there at the church, but then, like I say, you only have that one house back there now.
Right.
And, uh.
But they want to build some more houses back here, I think, that's, that's the reason, they don't want so much traffic going by that church.
He may, I know.
And the safety issue.
So back there where they built the house? So, okay, so they, so back there where the mobile home is, they built a house now? And you're saying they may build some more houses back there?
Possible.
They built a house there in the middle of, about the middle of that road.
Yeah, they are.
Yeah.
I said, well, Roscoe Mixon place.
Well, well, from the, the pipe up to there, it's not county though, right?
I, you know, that's why I asked about us maintaining that pipe.
I, I know, I know the county's always maintained that pipe, but I don't know past there, I don't think they did.
In my understanding, it stops.
It stops.
Used to be a bridge, a little wooden bridge.
And the county always kept it up.
Yeah.
Cause I used to make a loop there and go to Ralph's Land.
Go to, yeah.
That's my recollection, is that it stopped just on the other side of the ditch, canal where the pipe was.
I think where Mr. Ralphs lived there, I think he went out that way too sometime, didn't he, from where he lived there, so.
Yeah.
Whatever y'all want to do.
Okay, so what, what, what do you think off the top of your head it's gonna cost to do that road, just, you know, ballpark?
So what, how many hours it take, right?
Yes.
Half a day? What a greater, maybe a day?
Cause you need to go in there and mow it and hire that grass up so you can do something with it, you, you'll have.
Well, I believe in the contract, he's supposed to hire up that grass.
I ain't seen a contract, I ain't seen.
I mean, in the deal when we was out there, Mr. Ralph said he would hire that thing, of course, he dead now. He gone.
He'll probably do what he needs to do.
Yeah.
I said, he'll do probably what he needs to do.
Yeah.
He's got all pieces, you know, I'd go earn a day, day and a half and shape it up and be through it. If it's already cut off pieces, we're all I got to, you know, my.
I think he'll cut it up if you call him and tell him, he, he'll chop it up.
And I think that's in your district, it, Mary, okay. So you good with everything?
I, I'm good with it, and I think it's something, and it's been going on for probably two to three years, they've been dealing with them, so.
Since twenty-two.
We agreed, they didn't have the right deeds.
Yeah, so if we got everything right, I recommend that we go ahead and do it.
Okay. All right, let's carry it over then. Thank you, Larry. Okay, next one, G, contract with C S R A probation services.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is just a contract between Ware County, the State Court, Ware County State Court, and the C R, C S R A probation services for the monitoring of, uh, probationers. Um, it's something that we do every year, from my understanding, or every two years. It's, uh, contract's good for one year, with a one-year option to remove.
Okay, any discussion on it? Y'all got anybody that had a question on?
This is on like, per case basis, is that the way it works?
Yes, yes, it's where they monitor, I think it's for, you have ankle monitor on, and monitor probation.
Anybody's on probation, not, not necessarily ankle monitors, but anybody gets in trouble, gotta pay a fine or what?
But I think it's a special fee for the, uh, monitors, it's, it's in the back.
Yeah.
Any more? All right, let's carry it over. H, surplus miscellaneous items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is a, uh, request to surplus various office items in the, um, in our, in our buildings there on State Street, uh, the two storage buildings, um, it's various office items, which conclude, includes desks, uh, chairs, filing cabinets, map drawers. And then the other building, um, has fourteen, uh, pews that came out of the, uh, jury room and the courthouse, when they redone that, um, two carts that was purchased for building and maintenance, and I don't, they don't use those. Um, and then the, the old storage building that was used for, by the animal shelter in the back. And then there was, um, some old air conditioning units, which was only the condenser units, the outside units, it wasn't the in, inside, um, uh, air handlers. And then also there's twelve pallets of bricks, some of those bricks are new bricks that went to this building, and then some of those bricks are old bricks from the old hospital that's in there. So we would like to, uh, surplus those to, to move them out.
Put them on gov deal or sale.
Anything that has value, we'll put on gov deals, if it's no good, we're gonna, we got a dumpster, I will put it in the dumpster.
Okay.
So.
You don't think we might need to keep those bricks for this building, in case somebody runs into it?
Yeah. I mean, we can, we'll keep some.
I know, I know it's hard to match them up, you know, they make one kind so long, and then they change the color, and you can't hardly get the old color, and that's why I didn't know if we got somewhere to put them.
How many cubes are they?
Uh, there's twelve cubes, I'm not sure how many are each, I think there's only like a couple of, um, of this old building, but, I mean, this building, but I have to look again, so.
I mean, it might not hurt to keep some of them, you know, in my opinion.
Yeah. They may need them, cause I know my experience in the house building business, when you're building it, years and years later, you say, I wish I just had another panel, I could do this and so, you know.
You don't ever know when somebody's gonna turn the corner and tear a corner out, you know.
Okay. Any more discussion on it? All right, let's carry it over. All right, on I, twenty twenty-three C D B G, Phase Two, Dusty Lane, T A dash two, and Katy Lane, that's those two roads out in Jamestown that we did drive.
Yes, sir, so the C D B G, the twenty twenty-three C D B G covered the roads in Bennett Place subdivision. Uh, when those roads were bid, they came in two hundred sixty-seven thousand one hundred forty-four point twelve cents under budget. So we have that, that much unobligated funds. And so what we have, uh, looked at Katy Lane and Dusty Lane, which runs just off of, um, Jamestown Road, those roads qualify. Um, however, when they went and done the, uh, initial thought was by the engineers, well, they would fall in that, we'd fall in budget under the two hundred sixty-seven thousand. But when they went and shot elevations, because they're so flat, they're gonna have to have some additional piping. And so the price went up twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cent over the, um, two hundred sixty-seven. So the county would have to contribute an extra twenty-six thousand one hundred ninety-six dollars eighty-eight cent. That's, um, just the engineers' funds, when they're bid, they, they still may come out lower than that, so.
Yeah, has these got to be bid, or can they add them on to?
They have to be bid.
They have to be bid.
Under the, used to, you could add the, add new, add roads, but under the new laws with C D B G, you have to bid them. So in actually, they have to be bid at separate, at separate projects, because they don't touch each other, only the lots touch each other. So that's why they're, they're, um, labeled two, T A number two and T A number three. Um, so, and when you do that, you know, you have to put in, so traffic control is usually an item on a bid. So you, you would put in two separate traffic controls, which, and honestly, those will be run together. So where you, if you might have twenty thousand dollars, ten thousand each, you'll probably get it for ten thousand dollars. Um, because, you know, they're gonna run together. And so we think we might can fall back on the budget, but we won't know until the bids are, are submitted.
All right, any more discussion on it?
Can, on those utility poles, can you elaborate just a little bit on that?
Yes, sir, so there's three poles that are in the, um, in the bottom of the ditch. Um, will be in the bottom of the new ditch. So from my understanding, what the law is, if we're not acquiring right-of-way, they're already in our right-of-way, those are two subdivisions that were subdivisions, there wa- there wasn't roads there prior to the subdivisions. So there should not be any prior rights, um, involved in that. So, um, it should be the power company's responsibility to move those poles, not the county's. And we'll, we'll approach them on that, to get those moved, um, and, you know, they'll probably fight us, but I think we'll, we'll have the upper hand on that, because there's no, not, I'm aware of any prior rights. Um, if we do have to end up paying for them, it, uh, the contractors estimated it at five thousand dollars a pole, but he said that's probably double of what it actually would cost to move them. He said probably looking at twenty-five hundred dollars a pole to move them, but I don't think we'll have to move them. I think the power company have to move them by the laws.
So when, when will you find, when will you know that?
I'll, I'll start making contact with them, and, um, so I don't know how, how long it'll take to get asked to call them, but it may have to wait till we get some survey stakes out there too, so.
Okay, any more? All right, let's carry that one over. All right, manager, got any comment?
I don't, other than, you know, just, I, I'll say it before the regular meeting.
Okay. Any commission comment?
No.
Got anything?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'm gonna say it now, you know, we had, uh, some tragedies here last week in Wake Cross, Ware County, I think it was a motorcycle accident out there, where father and the son were on the motorcycle.
Yeah.
And then also, young man, the lightning strike, one of those were my family members, it was my first cousin's grandson. And, uh, both of these young men just graduated this year.
Yeah, I see that.
And, uh, it's just, just sad, you know? Yeah, so it's just sad, just wanna, I'd say, wanna just keep those families in our prayers, you know, because, uh, just never know when things can happen, and sometime, you know, it could be in your family, you know?
And that was one of my comments for the regular.
Oh.
Where did that happen at then?
Right out there on Le June Road.
Le June?
Yeah, Le June.
I thought it said Wesbar.
It was Le June, right down there where you go to the end, and you have to turn right.
Where we took those roads in there?
Yep.
I, I thought it was that pond.
Yeah, Timmy lives there, my son, he lives on that road, he built a house about three years ago, but.
Yeah.
It's right down there, and they were, went fishing, you know, and, you know, it was a bad lightning, what was that Thursday, I believe it was?
Yeah, my grandson, he went, he graduated with it.
Yep. And, uh, so both, both, I think both of them played football.
Yeah, he, he knew them boys.
Yeah, so it's just, it's very sad.
Yeah, that's a bad.
Yeah. That's all I have.
I had a kinfolk get hit in a boat this last, in the swamp, years ago. Okay, is any more? Any more comment? Uh, I had a caller on that, out there on, what's seventy-seven, uh, where we looked at that road.
Sam's Road and Seventy-seven?
Yeah, where, that pipe, she says that road's blowed in, out again. Larry, has it, has that thing blown out again? Have you been to it lately?
If I have, they ain't called me, we went and raided it the week of the fourth.
Did it blow it out? Oh, it didn't?
From my knowledge, it ain't blew it out.
She said it water went across the end of it again and washed it real bad.
Ain't no way to call them.
Uh, that pipe probably needs increasing, but now, we went and looked at it, and we said it belonged to the state.
That's the state, that's on state's right there.
We, we're not responsible, well, what did we find out from the state?
Du- well, Dusty left, I talked to Dusty, so I've got to go meet the, um, the new engineer now and see what they say. I don't know if they'll replace it or not.
Ms. Green, she's always calling about it.
Right, so the problem you got there is if you try to increase that pipe, you're gonna have to dig that ditch down that one seventy-seven. I don't know what elevations are, because it, you know, there's only about, that ditch is only six, eight inches, I mean, maybe deeper than that, but it's not very deep at all.
You say, you can't, uh, if you increase the pipe, you're gonna have to build a mound there, because that water goes down. Right here in that curve, there's a pipe to go across, and I mean, it's, it's right where the asphalt made it, it's why it don't fire a pond.
You don't think we could move up the dirt road a little bit and put a pipe across the dirt road to change that water over?
No, because then she'll be calling every time it rain, right now it's the D O T's problem, let the D O T do it.
If, if it's state road, then we need to let state do it, right?
I talked to Dusty, and, um, you know, and I said, you know, asking him to look at it, was, now he's not here. So I'll get with the new engineer, new area engineer, and see what, what they say. But I don't think D O T's gonna permit a hump in the road right at, at the pay road, so.
Well, I don't think it'd need to if you, if you clean out those ditches. He lowered them ditches.
Which road is that on?
Sam's Road and One Seventy-seven.
That's right, go in there, that lost walk a lot.
We replaced the pipe one time, from my understanding, um, and we shouldn't have.
Yeah, it blew it out, cause they put rock in it one time.
The D O T put some milling on.
Yeah, they put, they blew the whole road out across that end of.
Right, but I'll, I'll reach out to the new engineer, I need to go meet him anyway, so, see what he can give.
Okay, that's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. I hear motion to adjourn.
So move us, Chair.
Motion to adjourn, will take about, what, twenty minutes?
Don't leave that long.
Ten, ten minutes? Well, ten minutes, come back for the regular meeting.